Basically expanding, you know, what is the stormwater going to do? Not just next door, but each house making where do we improve the style of the building. But I'm not as good because of the detention. It was more with highway development because we're not really planning on highway development. With this, at least we're building a detention.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for all in for your attendance this evening and for the September 22nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We'll go ahead and call to order and as always, start off with the approval of our minutes of our last meeting from August, excuse me, 25th. If the commissioners have had time to review, see if there's any amendments or changes that need to be made. And if not, we would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve the minutes of August 25th.
I'll second.
Everybody's excited. Let Lacy have that one. You go ahead and roll call it, please.
Aye.
Stand.
Aye.
Of state.
Aye.
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 Thank you. We do not have any scheduled visitors or guests this evening or unfinished business to attend, so we'll move right on into our new business for this evening. First on the agenda is a zoning amendment, number 25 dash 0009. Property owner is Lindell Preston Bennett Williams and Rhonda Marie Williams. Property location is approximately 13 acre parcel abutted by East Hartley Road on the north, south of East Elementary. The existing zoning is R1A, single-family estate district. The requested zoning is RSF1, single-family district. The floor is yours, Megan.
Thank you. So as you said, as Mr. Garrison said, this is a zoning request going from one of our older single-family zoning districts, R1A, which was retired, to the updated single-family zoning district of RSF1. And again, this is a 13 acre parcel, south of East Elementary on Hartley Road. And as you guys have seen before, these are our guiding factors for considering a zoning amendment, including looking at the surrounding zoning and uses, the compatibility with the comprehensive plan, trends of development, and the suitability of the property under the existing zoning. So surrounding uses, there are a variety. To the north, you have the East Elementary School in the city and a vacant property, which is in Christian County. Both of them are zoned agricultural. And this also encompasses or surrounds a property just in the middle to the east side of it that is zoned R1A as well, which was originally, it was all one tract of land before the small piece was subdivided. To the east, you have unincorporated residential land that is zoned R1, which is suburban residential. To the south, you have a C2 zone property, which appears to be residential in use at the time. It's likely that the C2 property, it was zoned C2 because it is abutting Highway 14. And then there is also a little strip of land to, just immediately to the south on the southwest half, that is owned R1 in the county, and it is owned by the company that owns the I1 property just to the south, which is abutting on the west. It actually abuts this piece of property on the west side. So, and that's a storage facility. And then going, continuing west, the northwest portion of this property abuts R1A, which is also in the city and is used for residential purposes. So in looking at the comprehensive plan for guidance, we look at the highest and best uses of the property, and in the comprehensive plan, it was identified as single-family on the future land use map, which aligns with the proposed zoning request. And there is water and sewer adjacent to the property. There's a six inch main, a water main that feeds East Elementary across Hartley Road, and then eight inch water main that's located to the property to the west, and that would require a water main extension. And then there's an eight inch gravity sewer main that runs adjacent to this property, to the adjacent property as well. In order to ease the transition between those commercial and industrial uses, a buffer yard would be required when this goes to develop. And so that would be a buffer yard B on the portions that abut a commercial zoning, which is a 25 foot buffer, and a buffer yard C for anything that's adjacent to or touching an industrial use to help ease that transition. And then during the plating process, a traffic study, traffic impact study and a stormwater report will be submitted for review to both the city of Ozark and the Ozark Special Road District, as East Hartley Road is under their jurisdiction. It is a primary collector, so it would be appropriate for this use. And finally, we had a, we sent out a public notice 15, over 15 days prior to this hearing, as well as the hearing that will be happening on October 20th for the Board of Aldermen. And staff do recommend, recommend the approval of the zoning amendment. Oh, and one last thing, the neighborhood meeting did, comments that were gathered included concerns for pedestrian safety, traffic, and the buffering between uses. And as I did say, the traffic impact study will be completed in the next phase of development.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant or representative of the applicant that would like to speak to this application? Yes. And just a reminder, name and address, would you please?
John Sayre, 1301 East Daniel Street here in Ozark.
What was your last name?
Sayre, S-A-Y-R-E.
Thank you.
I'm representing Mr. Williams. Really, I don't have anything to add to this. I just was going to come up and see if you had any questions about anything.
Okay, we'll call you up if we do.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, at this point, we'll go ahead and open up to, for public comment on this particular application. So the floor is open to anyone that would like to speak. Feel free to come forward. Seeing no movement, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of this application and turn it over to the commission for questions or comments that might be coming. Hadley, go ahead.
I have a question, sir, if you don't mind coming back up. I was looking at the concerns and some of the concerns, the sidewalk installation, that's not the sidewalk, but the plan to have schoolchildren cross. How did, so is there any plan for that? I know we're not doing preliminary plat or anything like that tonight, but I was just curious if that, if you guys have any...
It's definitely been talked about. That was, there was, by the way, there was two people showed up for the neighborhood meeting, and there was the one person that did ask about that. You know, there's been conversations about, you know, the safety of the kids crossing the road. I'm sure a preliminary plat, that will be addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The answer, you, Hadley, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Anyone else? Everybody give me a thumbs up if you're good. Adam, no thumb? Okay. Just making sure, okay.
Partially working.
Okay, well, if we're through that, we're, we would entertain a motion for approval on this particular application then.
I'll make a motion to approve zoning amendment dash 25 dash 0009 for changing the zoning based on staff recommendation.
Do you have a second? Suzanne? Roll call, when you get there, Ava.
Aye.
Aye.
Jeff Harrison.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on, we actually have three separate applications for the same property. We're going to have an annexation, look at the plan, PUD, and then also the preliminary plat for the Maribella, but they'll be done individually. So let everybody know, we can only talk about them individually as we go along. So we'll be looking at the annexation number 25 dash 0007. Property location is 229 acres, partially bordered by North Farmer Branch Road on the west and Blue Stem on the east. Property owner is Maribella LLC. Megan.
So this is the property. It will be, like Jeff said, we will be doing three individual applications for the different, different permits that we have. So it is also to the east of James River Church, and it's to the north of highway, the intersection of Highway N and North Farmers Branch. And so we look to the Missouri State statutes for guiding factors considering annexation, meeting those standards that it's not currently part of our city, as well as it is compact and contiguous with our city limits. It's on the south with the multifamily residential. And then it is, the property is in good standing with the state of Missouri, and the property is located in tier one of our urban service area, which is an agreement we have with Christian County. And the property is within 300 feet of both the city water and city sewer. And like our previous application, there are a number of zoning districts and uses surrounding the property. To the north, you have both residential and industrial. On the northwest side, you have, in, this is, will all be in the county, M2, which is general manufacturing, C2, which is general commercial. Both of those are associated with the quarry, that's to the north. And then you also have our rural resident, which is RR1, which is the piece that is also surrounded by the property. And then you have additional residential uses in A1 agricultural and AR agricultural residential zoning. And then to the east, all of these are residential properties within Christian County, again, rural residence, agriculture residence, and suburban residential. To the south, we have residential as well, but on the south, for most of the south side, it is in, within city limits, and these are, these properties are zoned R3, which is our medium-density multifamily. And then in the southwest corner, we do have one parcel in Christian County, which is a rural residence zoning. And then to the west, we have James River Church, which is not adjacent to the North Farmers Branch, but those properties, they are owned by James River Church, and we do expect to see a, an annexation and zoning amendment forthcoming with those, and potentially for R4, which would be the adjacent property to the west, on the west side of North Farmer Branch. And then if you go further north, along Raymond Road, you have I1, which is in the city limits, and it is an industrial use. And so, again, looking at comprehensive plan guidance, we're in the, the next application, we will be looking at rezoning this parcel to, from Agriculture District in the county to planned unit development within the city. The recommended land use forum, the comp plan, is mostly mixed use, but there is a section that is single-family residential in the southeast portion of the parcel. The planned unit development zoning is appropriate based on the variety of types, and then it, given its proximity to those, those variety, as well as the primary collector corridor and primary arterials that it is connected, or it is adjacent to. And then we do not have any significant current concerns with zoning or land use friction. There are either going to be right-of-way in-between different land uses or additional common area, and there's a 30-foot wide buffer, which I will say multiple times, around the perimeter of the property. And that is all I have on my annexation. And if you have any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Do we have the applicant or the representative of such that would like to make any comments toward the annexation at this point? And your, your name, sir, and address, please.
Yeah, Michael Roberts. I live in Ash Grove, Missouri, and I'm the representative for Maribella LLC. And I do have a question to kind of, I guess, in response to your question is, because these are three topics tonight with annexation, PUD, and preliminary plat, there is some information that I want to share with everybody here, but do I just need to wait till the end, or is that applicable now?
Is it clear and present to each application, or is it more general information you're wanting to get?
I would say more general, but if there's a majority of association, it would be with the PUD and what we're wanting to do with the property.
Okay, why don't we just wait to that? We'll do this annexation, and then we'll welcome that right before the PUD.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at that point, we'll open it up for public comment or questions. Anyone just welcome, come right ahead. It is open for the, open to the floor. And we will need your name and address, please.
Carolyn Burnett, and I represent Farmer Branch, 55 plus, the senior development that's to the south of the property. 5620 North Farmer Branch Road. We just want to voice our concerns regarding watershed and water retention on this. So we want to, we've addressed it before with the city. They're aware of the issues, but nothing's really been addressed at this point.
Okay.
About the water coming off onto our property.
Okay. I'm sure we can address that probably ahead of the PUD or something here.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Is there any comment you want to make towards that particular statement, or move on to the, try to finish this?
We will address that further with the PUD.
Okay, I thought that might be the case. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Anyone else? The floor is open. Okay, seeing no movement, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of this particular application for annexation, and we'll open it up to the commission for questions or comments. Are by good? No questions at this point? Okay, then we would entertain a...
I'll make a motion to approve annexation 25 dash 0007 based on staff recommendation.
Second. Roll call, please, Ava, when you get time.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on to the, the application to look at and approve the planned unit development. Application number 25 dash 0001. Again, property location is 20, 229 acres, partially bordered by North Farmer Branch Road on the west and Blue Stem Road on the east. Property owner, Maribella LLC. Existing zoning is A1 agricultural district, Christian County zoning. And they're requesting, of course, the PUD planned unit development. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Megan.
Okay. So again, this is the same location of the property we just talked about, and Jeff did a great job of giving an overview of it. So just a little bit of an overview on planned unit developments, because we don't often have applications. I think we've had one in the five years I've been here. So providing the purpose and intent, it's providing an opportunity to combine mixed land uses within one development. So taking at least two of our zoning districts and using those in conjunction with one another to complement the uses for a mixed use aspect, usually on a larger scale than our general mixed use zoning. And it is designed to provide greater flexibility, and that can be in terms of your setbacks, the lot sizes, but it just provides the developer with the ability to kind of shape what the development looks like, more so than what our traditional zoning district is. And in the ordinance, it lists a few key opportunities, such as preserving our natural features, again, creative development, providing open space in recreational areas, and efficient use of the land, and kind of harmonizing with the surrounding land uses. And there are two standards that our PUD ordinance kind of points out, again, that mixture of two different land uses, and then not exceeding the development density that would be allowed with other zoning districts. And we still go back to our zoning guidance that we do for our regular zoning amendments, because this is requesting a zoning of a planned unit development. So we still want to rely on those factors that we normally consider. And so, again, I won't reiterate all of the land uses that are in, are in the surrounding area, but I mean, again, they are, there are a number of them as we go forward. And looking at the planned unit development, again, still looking at the comprehensive plan to target the highest and best use, minimize friction between the proposed use and those other uses surrounding them. Staff did not see any significant concerns with the land use friction from immediate or future standpoint, with several different land uses already surrounding the property, including industrial. Many of those are separated by that buffer yard, and there's additional common area and a number of roadways splitting those different uses, or separating those different uses. And the comp plan does, again, recommend mixed use as a future land use and single-family in that southwest corner, which will be, which is proposed to be single-family. A lot of it is, but that definitely coincides. And then, again, this is an appropriate development type and zoning for the location, because it is on a primary arterial, which is North Farmer Branch Road, and primary collector corridors with Southern View and Blue Stem as well. And just going into a little bit about the existing utilities, water and sewer are close to the site, and there are multiple locations, water stubbed out on, close to the southern border, ranging from an eight inch to a 12 inch diameter. Future water connections will be looped to help with redundancy in the area. And then an eight inch sewer main is located to the west of the property along North Hilltop Road. And then there's a 10 inch sewer main located to the south of the property line as well. A preliminary stormwater and traffic report were reviewed by both the city of Ozark and OSRD, because all of those roads are under OSRD's jurisdiction. And we, they will continue to provide information as the plating process goes along. And so, lastly, for the planned unit development, at least in terms of the details, they, this will be, still be following the transportation overlay district, or at least those commercial components. And the transportation overlay district runs along North Farmer Branch Road. And then, again, I had already mentioned this, but there is a 30-foot buffer surrounding the perimeter, and that would be composed of fencing and/or berms, as well as keeping those existing trees, especially on the southern side, but there are trees throughout. And then, I'm sure we will get into this with the developer's presentation, but there is a private trail system throughout the entire property, as well as a number of different amenities, in terms of like a pool and community center, and like smaller recreational opportunities throughout. And so, if you guys have any other questions, I'm free to answer those, or we can turn it over to the developer.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Now would be the time for you to speak, sir. You're up. And again, Michael Roberts, correct?
Yeah, Michael Roberts. So I live in Ash Grove, Missouri, and I'm the representative for Stephen Conny Faria and Maribella LLC. My goal tonight is to just kind of hit some high points. You guys were gracious enough to allow me to come and visit you a few months ago, I think it was late spring, early summer. And so I just wanted to touch on some of the small changes, or some big changes and small changes, rather, that have happened with the development that we want to try to pull off. And then just leave it to any questions that you folks may have for us as we move forward through the development process. And there's going to be a couple of things that I want to reference in this, so I just want to make sure, was everybody able to get a copy of this handout? Okay?
Pretty sure, yes.
Okay, great. So I wanted to reiterate to everybody that, as of right now, all of our partners involved in this project are still local. Stephen Conny are local residents, they raise their children here, they still live in this area, and everybody that we've engaged in at all levels of this development are going to be local individuals and businesses that will participate in this project. Earlier in the year, when we presented this to you, I do not think that we had a very defined definition of what the amenity package would look like, and now that we work with Megan and everybody at the city, we've, we've kind of got that defined in a way that I think we can move forward with it and there not be too many changes with it. And one of those being with the size of this development, the city ordinance, you know, triggers the calculation of us having to put in a pool. So with the number of single-family residences that are being proposed in this development, which is approximately 540, we peeled, the original development had close to 665 single-family residences in it, and we've backed that off to approximately 540. And that was one of the goals in working with the city and everybody involved, is to kind of take some of that density pressure off the project, and so we've reeled that in. But with that being said, the calculation of the pool specifically, and what we want to do with the rest of the amenity park, there will be a 6,000 surface square feet pool being built in this, which is a pretty substantial pool. I know the community, in the community that we're trying to develop will be large for the city of Ozark, and that pool may not seem like it's very accommodating, but that's a pretty good-sized pool. On top of that pool, we will have two pickleball courts that are official size, a basketball court, sand volleyball, a 2,400 square foot clubhouse with separate men's and women's bathrooms, that will have a community area in the middle of it for gatherings, birthday parties, that sort of thing, and a lot of other smaller amenities, such as like bocce ball, dog parks, and just different things that we're going to create throughout the development. We actually have another space that created enough square feet, and then what we call an activity node, spread out through the development, where we can get in a couple of extra pickleball courts. And then in the northwest part of this development, where the multifamily is going to be at specific to the apartments, the apartment section will have its own amenity with a pool, pickleball courts, basketball courts, so it'll be separate amenities, separate HOA and that. So those are things that we tried to bring to the development, again, to enhance that idea that we're trying to build a community within a community. Megan kind of touched on this in her summary. What is also a big component that we feel like is in this development is the integrated trail system. There's approximately four miles, linear feet, four miles of a trail system that will be in this community development. With the southern portion that butts up to the community, just to the south there, that 30-foot wide strip down through there will have the 10-foot trail system that integrates into the city of Ozark's wider trail system that is trying to be accomplished that we're given in that easement. So the idea of creating the green space and the additional conveniences of, within the community, and those recreational activities, we think the trail system accomplishes several of those objectives and goals, because we have intentions of leaving the natural landscape to the best of our ability. You can see that there's some wooded areas, clusters of trees and stuff on there, to the best of our ability, leave those as it is, and incorporate those into the trail system throughout the development. And that would be in addition, obviously, to the landscaping plan that we would have to turn in during the final plat process. So, again, there's going to be some additional detail that I go over, but does anybody have any questions at this time regarding the amenity section?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, yes.
One quick question.
Yeah.
And I may have heard this wrong, I thought Megan said maybe the trail system was going to be private, is that...
any questions at this time regarding the amenity section?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, yes.
One quick question. And I may have heard this wrong, I thought Megan said maybe the trail system was going to be private, is that correct, or will it be open to the public?
There'd be a portion of it that is private, just the citizens within the development. Of course, the easement across the whole southern territory would be part of the public trail system. Yeah. And if everybody, if you have a, if you can take a peek at that now or in your leisure, that would give you an idea of the open space, not only in this kind of like teal color does the amenity park where the pool and everything is going to be at, but the rest of that green coloring throughout the development is the open space recreational areas in the trail system that's integrated. Again, the goal of that trail system, not only covering the entire perimeter of the project, but is also designed in a way to the best of our ability to allow anybody in any quadrant of this development to walk, ride their bikes, scooters, what have you, and be able to get to that pool and amenity park in the center of the development. And again, there's some activity nodes that are part of the PUD that you will see, where we've got like fire pits, gazebos, picnic tables, some softer children's amenities like monkey bars, sandboxes, that sort of thing, that will be spread out through this in development. So it's not just all concentrated right here, it is spread out through the development. And then, at the bottom of that page, you will notice there's like a pink or effusive line that kind of squiggles through that southern development and kind of creates this larger green space. That is a result of the updated FEMA floodplain map that came out earlier this year, which actually kind of put us in a position that we have to stay out of that area. So although it is green space, we have no intentions of filing for any type of special permit or really even flirting with trying to do anything in that floodplain area, we're just staying out of it. And that is a difference, I believe, that we have a little bit more information about from the first time that I visited you folks earlier in the spring. I think the next thing I want to touch on is just going back to our vertical build partners. Like I said, all of them are all local companies, local individuals that we're working with to build out this development. Right now, the development is scheduled to take anywhere from about a five to 10-year period. We're thinking maybe we can get it down to five or seven. But I think that's also a little bit different than when we spoke about when I was here over in the years. We've got a little bit better definition of the timing of when this project is going to be pulled off. That timing really lines up with all of our partners in this project, whether it be the utility company, the vertical build partners. I met with Dr. Wilson in the school several weeks ago, and that timing seemed to work for her and her team. I don't want to speak too much for Dr. Wilson and, you know, whether they're for or against the development, by no means, but I just know when I met with her team, there was not a huge concern at that time about, you know, capacity in the school and the speed of our development. It seemed that that was something that her and her team could handle. And as of right now, I believe that, again, all the way from infrastructure, wastewater, utility companies, that's a timeline that really accommodates everybody that's involved in the project. I think from there, again, the whole 229-acre development, just kind of a quick breakdown of that, it's the yield on that's about 158 acres of developed land when it comes to the residences. We're at about 10 acres yield, net yield on the commercial space. The commercial will stay on the western side on the Farmer Branch corridor. And then, you got approximately 43, 44 acres of green space. So that green space and recreational area accounts for about 21% of the development. So again, one of those aspects of us trying to make sure that we accomplish the goals, not only for us as developers, but the goals of the city in maintaining current landscape and green space area. Going back to the timing, just a little bit on that five to seven years, really five to 10 years, probably more than likely, is the idea that we're, we're still engaging in about 18 phases of the development. So our goal is to take on about two to three phases a year, and there's going to be a little bit of give and taking that depending on market conditions and kind of where our vertical build partners are at. But we've landed on about 18 phases on taking down the full 229 acres. And then, lastly, I think before I open it up to, to any questions that you guys have about the project, and we do have a representative for our traffic study partner here, but I wanted to iterate, one of the goals I know from the comprehensive plan was improving the road infrastructure. We did come into an agreement with Ozark Special Road District, as Megan said, they have jurisdiction on the entire exterior road infrastructure around Mirabella, and we have defined that scope with them. And one of the things that I wanted to remind everybody is the Farmer Branch corridor, the expansion of that going to three lanes, but also adding the turn lanes coming into the development is beyond what the recommendation is from our traffic study. And if there are specific questions about that, Mr. Dane is here to answer those questions if you have those. But that was another area where, even though the traffic studies said what it did, OSRD was very specific about safety and getting that road infrastructure developed in a way that was pleasing to everybody. So we agreed to that. We will expand that to three lanes. Again, I guess the section of that would be kind of four lanes when you include the turn lane coming into the development. We've got some work that we got to do on the eastern side on Blue Stem, in the northwest on Raymond Road and Southern View, coming into that intersection up there. And I think the other thing that happened in a very positive way from the last time that we met is, I believe I informed everybody that we were working with Ozark Electric Co-op. They had went out of their way to work with Liberty Utilities on doing a territory swap to be the utility provider for this, this project. And I believe I mentioned it at the time, and I'll reiterate today, there is no way that this project would be successful if we had to move forward with Liberty Utilities. Quite frankly, it would have been shut down and we would have had to have done something different. So, we were very thankful that Ozark Electric did what they did. But as of June 8th of this year, the Missouri Public Service Commission voted favorably for that territory swap to take place. So as we move forward, they will be the utility provider for this project, which is a huge win for us. But I also believe in that there is a win for the city of Ozark too by having, you know, another valid utility provider for the area. So, there's a tremendous amount of detail on this project, as you can imagine, being 229 acres, but I don't want to beat everybody up with a bunch of detail. So, if there's anybody that has any questions about the development, myself, or we have a few other folks here tonight that hopefully can answer those questions.
Okay. Yeah, we'll call you back up when they turn it over to the commission. Thank you for your time. Okay, we'll go ahead and entertain the public portion here. Anyone that would like to come speak to, ask questions, and we will address your watershed here momentarily. But I just want to keep, I want to open up to anyone else. Oh, come, come ahead.
Carolyn Burnett, Farmer Branch, 55-plus, 5620 North Farmer Branch Road. I'd be interested to know about the walking trail that's on the south side of the property. We're at the, we're, we're south of them, so it would be, the walking trail would be between us and the development. That's a 30-foot easement, did you say? The walking trail? Which isn't a whole lot. We're 55-plus, so the security of our residents, that's what we sell, an agated 55-plus community, would be interested in knowing what they would want to do with the security measure of having that public walking path right behind our, our property. Are they planning to fence that? It sounded like earlier that maybe there were berms and other things that you were going to add, but I'd be interested in knowing where that trail leads to at the east end of the path? And if we'd have double the walking behind that and what they could offer for security for our residents to keep people out of their backyards?
Okay. I'll, I'll let Megan talk to that first, but yeah, I've got that note here for you.
Thank you.
Yes, you bet, you're welcome. Anyone else? Are you coming as the public or?
I was going to respond to her question as the engineer of record.
Okay, when we done with the public, then I'll ask you to come up for that, okay? Kind of have to do the public all at once. Anyone, anyone else for public comment?
Hi, Rachel Campbell with Show Me Christian County, address is 113 East Church Street. I'm with Show Me Christian County, and just as a reminder of who we are and what we do for those that don't know, we are the local economic development organization that services and supports all of Christian County, and that includes the wonderful city of Ozark. So, our organization has been aware of this project for a while now and worked with the developer in various capacities over the past few years. And we're excited to see consensus around a plan moving forward with 10 acres of some commercial retail, diversity in housing types and housing density. We're looking forward to some of the positive economic impact, not to mention the public improvements that this development should bring to this area. And offering a range of housing options aligns with the goals outlined in Ozark's comprehensive plan and reflects best practices seen in growing communities across the country to accommodate variety of age ranges and professional sectors as well. So we're eager to just see how this project will contribute to a thriving and vibrant Ozark community.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Floor is still open. Okay, seeing no movement, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of this piece of the process. And we'll turn it over to the commission. Megan, do you want to comment or call upon one of the departments first and foremost on the watershed, water runoff, stormwater, address that first?
Yes.
And then we can, then we can move on into the trail, of course.
Yeah, so if, I will defer that to Public Works or if Jeremy Parsons wants to talk about the stormwater concerns or, or our consultant as well.
I'm going to turn it over to the representative, the engineer of record, and let him kind of explain this.
Okay.
We will be, obviously, we're very involved with all the review and everything, but I think as the engineer of record, they should be the one that kind of puts this forward.
Very good. And you want to comment too? Come on, come on up if you want. Can you comment too on the trail question?
Yes, sir.
Can you do that as well? Okay, great.
I'm Todd Chandler with Great River Engineering, 186 South Payne Stewart Drive, Suite 151, Branson, Missouri, 65616. I'll touch on the stormwater question first. As far as the response to that, if you've looked in your package, you'll see we've met all the city requirements for stormwater detention. The proposed development will have five detention ponds that are designed per the city requirements, as well as two water quality basins to ensure that we're not contributing to any sediment runoff into the floodplain. So you'll see, we've met those requirements as well as, you know, that's kind of been reviewed by both the city as well as OSRD since we're adjacent to their roadways.
Okay. Say that one more time so I don't have to look it up. How many retention ponds?
We have five extended, extended detention ponds and two water quality basins.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then, as far as the trail question, this is a dedicated easement that's 30-foot wide. The trail will be 10-foot wide. The infrastructure for the trail will be maintained by the city. The easement itself will be maintained by the, the HOA, Mirabella. So it was working in conjunction with city staff that we provided this easement. So I think that that kind of addresses, you know, it's, it's, it was something the willingness of the developer to provide that 30-foot easement, because obviously, we'd prefer to do something different with that land, but for the sake of the Chadwick Spur Trail, we have dedicated that 30-foot for use as a public trail. And if you look at the PUD document as well, on page nine, there's a section 1.10 that provides additional information on the trail side of it, as far as responsibilities for And this will be a highly maintained, you know, we'll want this development to be really nice, so it'll be mowed. You won't have tall weeds that kind of contribute to some of the safety concerns that the, the guest provided. There's not a fence requirement as part of that, just it's, it will be mowed and kept looking very nice because we want this to be a really good development for the entire
Go, go, if you get, yeah, go ahead, it's, yeah, we're.
Quick question, Todd. Just to summarize on the stormwater, with your five detention ponds and the water quality features, runoff will be the same or less than what it is today?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know the specific, this may be too technical, or this may be a city question, the actual public sidewalk, where does it fall as far as from the property of the southern community? Is there, is there a space between the public sidewalk and the property of the 55 and older? Or do you know those, do you have those answers?
I do not know that, top of my head. We can look into that, but I'm not sure about where, I believe there is a sidewalk, but I do not know that for sure. This was constructed in 2017. Karen might be.
I guess my question is, are you referring to the new public trail?
Yes, not, yes. What will be put in with the development?
Yeah, I will attempt to answer that and then Jeremy can clarify if I'm missing anything, but it is a 30-foot easement. That trail 10-foot wide can meander within that easement, but this trail easement is all on their property, not on neighboring property. But again, it doesn't have to dictate, it has to be on one place or the other, what makes sense of meandering through that easement.
Okay, so it will be within the 30 feet?
It's within the 30 feet. There could be 10 feet on one side or two feet or whatever, however it makes sense to lay out within that easement.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Proceed, yeah. Anything else you want to?
No, just up here if you guys have any other questions.
Okay, we'll call you here in just.
Okay, thank you.
If we have any more questions for you. It is open to the commission for questions or comments, or go ahead, Jack.
I just want to maybe follow up on the stormwater. The speaker that talked about the 55-plus, I guess I have a question of her.
We have a question for you.
No, you're fine. I was making notes.
Thank, thank you for coming tonight and speaking. So if, with, with the information you heard about the stormwater, and they're able to address that stormwater, it's not going to be any worse than it is today, and in fact, it'll probably be better than it is today, are you supportive of this development in general?
We're hopeful that it's better. Right now, it's not good. So if it's better, that's a good thing. You know, I, I'm a representative for the company, I work for the company, so these are my concerns as well as our owner's concerns, as far as that goes. I don't think anybody's trying to stop anybody from developing anything, but we do want our water runoff issues to be addressed, please. We've tried before and they just, it just hasn't happened, so we're very hopeful for that.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Could I ask one more question? In my question earlier in regards to the trail, I didn't get a definitive answer, or maybe they don't know yet, where that trail ends, does it just encompass the property or does it go to the east and stop and traffic, foot traffic would come back?
I don't have an answer, but probably as it develops, I don't know the answer to that myself.
I'm just wondering if we'll have double the foot traffic.
Do we have that answer yet because it's not?
I'll default, defer that to Jeremy Parsons.
Okay, I'll, I'll let him come answer that for you. What do you, what do you call it, musical chairs?
All right, that's all right. You get me talking about trails and we'll be here all night. Now, at this point with this development, all they're required to do is provide that 30-foot trail easement, and they chose to do that along the southern border of their property. And at this point, it will only be built on the property that they're actually developing. But several years ago, we passed a master trail plan. And in the master trail plan, we identified the need for what we call a northern corridor. We named it the Blue Stem Corridor because that's that drainage way. So eventually, we've gotten some grant money for design of this trail. Eventually, we'll go after construction money on either side of that as well. The goal is to have an east-west connector that connects you all along northern, what we call the northern corridor, the CC corridor, and tie you into the Chadwick Flyer. What we're working on in terms of design right now goes all the way from Blue Stem Road all the way to 17th Street. And 17th Road all the way to 17th Street. And 17th would dump you into, dump, would allow you to walk into an area such as the Price Cutter there. So the residents would have an opportunity to live, work, play, but also use this as a multimodal connection. If they wanted to jump on their bike and get on the Chadwick Flyer, that's our goal. And as, yes.
Would you, just to, to add to that, so with this development, essentially the trail will just extend from Farmer Branch to Blue Stem Road. It will just make that connection between those two.
Yes, that's all that we require in our ordinances because that's the parcel of land that they own. But we're working diligently on making those connections further.
Right, but it won't be a dead end. It'll connect to the, to the infrastructure.
The goal is connectivity. If you've ever looked at our trail master plan, it looks like, I don't know, it's, it's an aggressive plan.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And I will comment because that trail will be constructed by the city of Ozark, correct? Correct? That piece we just talked about, I'm sorry. I thought he needed to answer.
No, you're fine. The ordinances that we recently passed, I believe like two years ago, not only require that they provide the easement, but the developer also has to build that trail. And that's how committed we are to the community. We feel like that's an amenity. I think they would agree. They've done a great job kind of showcasing that as an amenity. And I think it'll be an amenity not just for their development, but for the entire northern border.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate it. Well, you're not done yet.
I had a quick question. Is the city going to be able to keep up as far as like water supply goes with the, as far as providing water for, for the city? Is there going to be any concerns about, about the development of this magnitude affecting that at all or?
We initially did have some concerns, but if the map could widen out, I'll try to explain it. You all know where Campbell City area is, just to the north of James River. I have a very large 12-inch main that runs across there. What this development actually allows us to do is make another interconnection or a northern connection. And by, by providing that redundancy in that northern connection, it actually helps people all the way out in Grand Haven because that just increases the flows and increases our fire protection. It's actually a good thing because it gives us an additional alignment or path to get water out to those neighborhoods.
Part of my question is also like, as far as the aquifers underneath Ozark. I think there, there's a couple of years ago, there was a presentation about needing to tap into some lakes in the, in the future. So that's what I was, I was kind of wondering.
Yeah, specifically to the aquifer, that is something that we're always monitoring along with DNR as well. We are planning to the future and we did move forward with that ordinance. We are partners with the Southwest Missouri Water Coalition and we did move ahead and approve purchasing surface water from Stockton. Now, that could be years from now. The aquifer even, you know, lately it's been dry. I understand that. But we've, we've got a good aquifer in place, but we have to plan for the future. And that's why we entered into that agreement with Southwest Missouri Water Coalition. So that'll be an alternative. And in the world of water, we're, we're always preaching redundancy, redundancy. If something goes down, you've got to be interconnected and that will provide us a surface water redundancy.
Thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but this is more, more an opinion than anything to address, go back for a moment to your watershed concern? That was county land before. Nothing was happening, right? You wouldn't get any help. So when the city, when it gets annexed into the city, we require the developer to make sure there's no additional impact from what's coming in the development minimally to not create more water. So it can't, it can't do anything but help, in my opinion.
You said it. You sound like a disciple of stormwater.
So I have, I still have a question for the, for you, ma'am. Where exactly, I'm sorry, we don't have maps that, can you point to where your community?
It's on the south side. It's at, it's at Farmer Branch, across the street from the Embassy Apartments. It's a gated community. It's that southernmost purple line. And we're south of it. You can barely see it on there. R4, R3 are indicated there.
Okay, so you're just south of the new flood zone?
For FEMA.
On the other side of this channel?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, that's all I do.
Gotcha, no problem.
Thank you. Still open to the commission. Go ahead, Chad.
I guess I'll start with Megan first. Is this appropriate time to talk about the traffic study or, or do we save it for the plot?
We can talk about the traffic study, yes, now or during the plotting, either way.
All right, I guess we'll just jump in. Mr. Seiler? You want to state your name and address?
Dean Seiler, 2201 West Chesterfield Boulevard, Suite 106, Springfield, Missouri.
Thank you. Just got several questions to make sure that, that I'm understanding this right and just for the, the good of the commission and the good of the audience. So with this development, there's three proposed access points?
Correct.
And, and with one being on Farmer Branch?
Correct. Our main one will be off Farmer Branch. There'll be one off of Blue Stem and there'll be one off of Southern View.
Okay. Mr. Roberts mentioned initially there was 600-plus homes, units, whatever, and that's, that's been reduced to 500-plus. Was it, was the traffic study for the lesser amount or for the greater amount or?
The traffic study was for the lesser amount. We looked at what was actually being presented to you tonight from a traffic perspective. And just to give you an idea of from a traffic perspective, in the PM peak hour, we would estimate that that was a 20% decrease in traffic due to the reduction in that number of homes. So pretty significant reduction when that density went down. Of course, you think about, that's roughly 100 homes. That's a pretty significant reduction. So it was an improvement on the traffic side as well.
Okay. And then at, at full buildout, 10 years down the road, seven to 10 years down the road, full buildout, this development, the only, the only items that were warranted from the development was, was a northbound right turn lane off of Farmer Branch and a southbound left turn lane off of Farmer Branch?
And in addition, there was a left turn lane off of State Highway NN onto Blue Stem.
On the Blue Stem, okay. So those are the only requirements of the traffic that are warranted based on the volume of traffic that this development's going to generate?
Correct.
All right.
But as, as Mike noted earlier, they've agreed to course widen Farmer's Branch to three lanes all the way across their property's frontage, which will really benefit the, the community as a whole more than just the development because those turn lanes would, would essentially be able to take care of their traffic. So that three lane really takes care of more of the community's traffic and even some of the Sunday traffic they see out there.
Right. But the continuation of that left turn lane south is of no benefit to this development. Not, there's no, there's no secondary access point off of Farmer Branch into Maribella?
No, we were concerned about spacing, so we ended up with just one access along Farmer's Branch. So yeah, to the south, there really is no benefit unless there's a future access really to the, to the west.
To the west.
So to this development, there's not.
Right, okay. And even though those, those improvements aren't required until full buildout, those turn lanes will be built before the start of phase two?
Yes, they were really, were needed in phase two. So they would be constructed at the start of phase two.
Okay. And then also, is it correct that, that the study found that really is no conflict between the Sunday church traffic and the, the Maribella traffic?
Correct.
And they have different periods of the day?
Yeah, well, we didn't do a detailed analysis. We did look at a Sunday morning and looked at traffic. As you all can imagine, and I'm sure you may have been out there, Sunday morning during specific periods, it gets pretty high. But when we look at a, a development like this with single-family residential, we, we don't, it doesn't generate a lot of traffic during those times. So kind of what we look at in traffic is what we call peak hours. And the peak hours really just didn't align with the development and the church. While yes, there'll be some additional traffic out there, it just wasn't aligned enough for it to be a, a big concern, especially when we talk about having the three lane out there.
Okay, I think, um, just kind of one other follow-up question. So in addition to Ozark Special Road District requiring Farmer Branch to be widened to three lanes, is there also a requirement from them on widening Southern View to 24 feet and widening Blue Stem Road to 24 feet?
Yes, and, and Raymond Road. When you go out and look, those are, are like most of your unimproved county roads. Some of them pretty narrow. And there was a desire to get them to a minimum width that it would be safe for two cars to essentially pass. So that was the minimum requirement. And I think it's 24, maybe 27. 24, okay, 24.
But, but the findings of this traffic study found that those, those county roads or Ozark Special Road District roads were sufficient with to handle the, the traffic?
We, I, the traffic study wanted them widened to a minimum of 20 feet.
20 feet, okay.
So I don't think that we, and so yeah, there was a minimum width because there's some points along each of them that are pretty narrow that we felt like, some of them needed a little bit of widening no matter what.
All right, last question. I saw an earlier memo that was requiring Hilltop Road to be milled and overlaid. Is that still a requirement from Ozark Special Road or is that off the table?
I, I don't know, not for sure, but I think that at one point was.
Okay, I can ask that later. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? I'm up here.
Yes, I see in, in section 9.11, it says that at an overall acceptable level of service, see an acceptable critical approach level of service D. What does that mean?
So it was kind of a grading scale we use as traffic engineers to try to make it easier to understand. And what we look at, when we look at, at intersections specifically at a two-way stop control intersection is how much is a vehicle delayed and, and per approach? So if they're coming from the eastbound, how long are they delayed to try and make a turn out onto the roadway? And so based upon how long our calculations say they're delayed, we assign a level service value of, from A to F. And it's kind of like grade card. A is good, free flow. You don't have to wait very long. All the way to F, which is, is gridlock and you're waiting longer than you would expect. And a lot of our studies are done to the MODOT standard and they allow level service E in the peak hours, which is what we look at.
So how bad is a approach level service D?
So that can be up to 35 seconds of delay per vehicle that's waiting at the stop sign.
That's not too bad. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
What's a typical delay time at a signalized intersection in the city?
Oh, a signalized intersection, probably in excess of 40 seconds at a signal because a signal itself induces some delay.
Right.
Just from trying to assign the right of way.
But it's not uncommon to have 120-second cycle where you may sit there for two minutes before you got the green?
Correct, yeah. I mean, you could be up to 100 to 115 seconds sometimes at a signalized intersection. I'm sure we've all experienced it.
Yeah, definitely. Yes.
I have a quick question maybe from Michael. Are there any, are there going to be any gatehouses or everything's going to be free flowing for the neighborhood?
So right now, there, part of the concept is in, in, I'm just going to, in a southwest quadrant, there is a community within a community we're trying to deem as a 55 and older that that, we've talked about that being behind a gate.
Okay. And then would there be on the trail, would there be, because I know you guys have your separated trail, would there also be some sort of just little gate there limiting access to the public?
There potentially could be specifically closer to the amenity part for safety reasons just because there's exposed, you know, open water in that area. But to kind of go along with that question, not just gates, but just working with the residences around the area, it was brought up in our neighborhood meeting about existing fences and/or additional fences that could be put up for safety. And those are things that, you know, we just have to address as it comes because some of the property owners had made an emphasis that they just wanted the fences the way that they are left and not done anything with, so.
What about the estates? So I read, I read in here something about the estates, which would be like a bigger lot line. Is that just going to be free flowing as well or is there a possibility of a gated area for those estates?
Us as, as developers of the land, there's not an intention right now for that to be behind gates. Those are designed to be larger lots and really some of the vertical build partners that we've talked to, they're probably going to take down multiple lots at a time for a single homeowner. And so if in their regards, they do something with a gate or fence.
I was just curious for traffic and things like that. That's why I said it's gate. Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Any other traffic questions?
Any other traffic questions before he gets almost sat down, we call him back?
Okay, I need the exercise.
I think you're good to go.
Thank you all.
Anyone else wants to chime in towards the, the approval of the PUD? Remember where, where we're at here in our process? A lot of information. Adam?
Yeah, I was trying to determine, and maybe you could point me to the right page, where within the development, and I believe, I'm, I'm trying to piece it together of what would be a Sydney, city ordinance for a sidewalk and if, and maybe it's in the plat and it should be held to the next one of if there are sidewalks in, if it's noted, there's sidewalks on one side of the road or both sides of the road because I know we have a recent ordinance about that. And so I was, I couldn't find it, but I was just curious if that's coming later in the plat section.
Yeah, I, I think I can answer that. Todd Chandler with Great River. The PUD actually addresses that on page seven of 38. So it calls out under section 1.06 sidewalks, a five-foot public sidewalk shall be constructed on both sides of all collector streets and at least one side of all local streets.
Okay.
And it's basically public sidewalk, sidewalks shall also be constructed on all adjacent roads, which includes Farmer Branch Road, Raymond Road, Southern View Road and Blue Stem Road. Sidewalks shall be five feet wide unless constructed on the back of curb, in which case they shall be six feet wide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes, go ahead.
With the mailboxes not in front of houses now, where on the, where would the mailboxes be? I'm just worried about the traffic piece. Would they be too close to the main road or make traffic back up? I don't know if that's been even addressed where the mailboxes would be.
We, that's a great question. We really haven't addressed it to, to date on that. But I think the intent would be a community like cluster per development.
And, and once again, it's just, I'm worried about the, I don't want to be too close where there's somewhere it's just kind of backlogs back on the road. Okay.
I think, and, and a lot of that's just coordinated with the postal service too because I believe that they have requirements as well. So, yep.
Thank you.
Great question.
But Todd, along that line?
Yeah.
It doesn't appear that any lots or, or maybe very few lots have frontage on the collector only. So from the preliminary plat, it looks like the driveways would be on those local streets, not on that, that backbone, that collector backbone through the center of the.
That's correct. Yep. And that's, that was by intent as well.
Right.
Yep, yep.
With the exception of Blue Stem, Chad, I mean, the Blue Stem, they do have feeders on the, that road off of Blue Stem I see right there. Like that, that's kind of where like, so Blue Stem, that's the case for the other two, I think, just for, not for Blue Stem.
In the southeast corner, yeah. Yeah, there's some lots that have frontage on that collector. And, and originally they didn't, but that came about when we started having to address the floodplain concern.
Yeah, we said that messes with some things.
Yeah, yeah.
So do they also front a new street on the west side? If I'm looking at it right?
Yeah, that, yeah.
So I mean, the driveway, I mean, my, my assumption would be is that the driveway to all these homes would be internal to Maribella. They would not be external to Blue Stem Road?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so the mailboxes would be internal to Maribella. They wouldn't be out on Blue Stem?
Yep, that is correct.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for now.
Thank you.
For now. Anyone else? Good, great questions. Keep going.
All right, I guess, is there a representative from Ozark Special here? Right there.
Good evening, commissioners. Derek Estelle with Topen Associates, 1550 East Republic Road, East Republic Road, Springfield, Missouri, representing Ozark Special Road District.
Okay, I may be, ask you some questions you may not be able to answer.
Okay.
I guess I'll just say for the record, I'm disappointed that they're not here. Is the timing of the improvements in the traffic study, as far as providing them before Phase Two or as Phase Two started? Is that, is that same timing that Ozark Special Road District is comfortable with?
Right, yes.
Okay, because I thought maybe I'd seen a memo originally and it probably was a draft that all improvements had to be built upfront before anything happened, but.
Right, no. So we've worked closely with the developer and have established that, you know, those improvements can be phased along with the development itself as it's phased.
Okay. And then the other question I asked Dane about Hilltop, anything required on Hilltop?
No, so that was originally a requirement that you're referring to. And after discussing with the developer and closely with the Ozark Special Road District Commissioners, they were able to prove to us that the impacts to Hilltop Road did not warrant resurfacing that roadway. And so we, that was agreed upon between Ozark Special Road District and the developer to remove that requirement.
Okay, thank you, good. I guess my next line of questions in the traffic study in 14.1, Ozark Special Road District improvements required beyond the recommendation of the traffic study, says these improvements would not have an impact on the capacity results of the study and are considered beyond what is recommended by the traffic impact assessment for capacity. And they would not impact level of service or capacity. So I guess my question is, is if they're not warranted by the traffic study and they're not going to improve, you know, the capacity or the level of service, why the requirement to make this private development widen Farmer Branch?
That's a great question. And so at a surface level, it may seem like that requirement is pretty arbitrary and it probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But when I, I'll give you a couple of examples and maybe it'll make a little more sense. So we use Farmer Branch as an example. Down where Farmer Branch ties into state highway and it's several lanes wide. And then there's a culvert immediately to the north of that, that requires that road to narrow down to two lanes. And then as you go further north and you approach the 55-plus community, they have turn lanes for that development. So it widens back out to three lanes. So you keep going further north, it widens back, or narrows back down to two lanes again. Then as you reach the entrance to the Marabella development, it would widen back out to three lanes. And then as you head north past the Marabella development, it would narrow back down to two lanes again. And then as you approach the intersection of Hilltop, it would widen back out to three lanes again. And then north of Hilltop, it would narrow back down to two lanes again. And then just in front of Capital, it widens back out to three lanes again. So the road is doing this. It's an hourglass shape as you're going all the way through it. And so from a capacity standpoint, the improvements that are recommended in the traffic study absolutely makes sense. But from an operational and safety standpoint, it makes more sense to have a uniform width corridor along the entire length so that it doesn't confuse people and so you're not swerving in and out of traffic as you're driving through. Same goes for Blue Stem and Southern View, the widening of those roadways. Again, the existing width of those roadways do not meet the minimum required width for a safe roadway. And so because of the additional traffic that's anticipated to be on those roadways, although not required from a capacity standpoint, we felt like was necessary for a safety standpoint on those roads.
Right. I understand. I mean, I say to that point, I think there's state highways that have that hourglass all over the place. So my question is, why Marabella? Did Capital make any improvements to Southern View when they more than doubled their capacity to produce asphalt?
They did not. So we've been in close communication with Capital as well. And as of now, they have not taken their access to Southern View. Now their master plan for their new asphalt plant does show an access to Southern View. And basically the discussion and agreement that we've had with Capital is that when they decide it's necessary for them to make that connection to Southern View, that they will improve, they will improve that roadway and actually improve the intersection of Southern View and Farmer Branch as well.
So then along those lines, James River Church recently completed a large expansion and they actually added two driveways on Farmer Branch. They didn't make a single improvement to Farmer Branch. Why is that?
That's, that's correct. And unfortunately, that's before my time whenever they were involved in this. I can't speak to, you know, some of the discussions that were had and why those connections were made. I can tell you that there's been some remediation that's been attempted at those intersections. If you drive down Farmer Branch now, you'll notice some safe hit bollards that have been knocked off.
Oh, they're all gone. They're all gone.
And so, so we've tried to make some interim improvements to the roadway to address those driveways that have been connected. But we're hopeful that as a part of this development, it'll make a more uniform corridor altogether. And if in the future, James River Church were to ever make additional improvements, then obviously we'd cross that bridge with them when we get there with the traffic studies.
Right. So along those lines, if Marabella spends all the money to widen Farmer Branch to three lanes, to widen Southern View to 24 feet and widen Blue Stem to 24 feet, say when James River comes in and develops, will there be, will there be a, an impact fee charged to James River Church? So Marabella recoups some of the, because that continuous left turn lane is no doubt, it's going to, it's going to benefit. I mean, there's no left turn lanes at any of the entrances into James River Church. Four entrances, no left turn lanes, no right turn lanes. The Hilltop has a right turn lane. That's it.
Right, yeah. So as far as impact fees go, I mean, that's, that's kind of a much bigger discussion. There's, as far as the state of Missouri goes, I'm not even sure if impact fees are legal to charge. That's a discussion that I'm not super in tune with. But what I can say is the improvements along Farmer Branch, we feel like are justified for the Marabella, to support the Marabella development. It's not to say that James River Church hasn't contributed to those, to the traffic along Farmer Branch, which is why we asked the developer to look at Sunday traffic. And it's basically what they were able to show is that the two, the traffic from Marabella and James River Church did not coincide. And so we felt like what they are doing is what's necessary to support the development. That's not to say that, you know, James River Church won't also be responsible for improvements to Farmer Branch or Hilltop or any of the adjacent roads around there as well.
I mean, there's a significant distance between the entrance of Marabella and the southern boundary. And that left turn lane will do nothing for Marabella and nothing for the traffic on Farmer Branch.
Right, right, yeah.
I mean, the 55-plus community didn't build, or there's, maybe there's a short left turn lane there.
I was going to say, there's three lanes.
What I'm trying to say, I think this is a great development. I think this is, this is needed. Housing is a shortage all over the region. I support this 100%. My personal opinion is that OSRD maybe is asking for things outside of their jurisdiction. I mean, I find it, I just have a hard time requiring a developer to spend millions of dollars on things that he has, he's not creating any issues for or impacting anything. So that's, that's all I'm trying to get at. It just seems excessive.
Right. And, and well, one of the, one of the pieces of the traffic study that didn't, that wasn't taken into account was the operational and safety standpoint of it. Again, it looks at capacity, what's required based on the volume of traffic being generated by the development. But as a part of those traffic studies, we also look at operational and safety. And we felt like improvements to Farmer Branch, Blue Stem, and Southern View were necessary from an operational and safety standpoint.
I don't have a big issue with Southern View and Blue Stem. But I think building a several hundred feet to 1,000-foot left turn lane that is never going to be utilized by the east side of the road is just excessive. So, thank you.
Anyone else? No, you talk. Commissioner Country, you want to speak? Come to the, come to the microphone.
I'm Jerry, one of the Commissioners with OSRD. I understand your question is talking about, you couldn't understand why we're pushing on that improvement and about the cost. You're talking a lot of money that we don't have. Do you see how the money do that?
Yeah, I agree with you 100%.
Jerry, talk into the speaker.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We have an access management policy that simply requires developers to do the improvements. And that's what we're trying to lead by.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, so your access management policy would require a developer to build 600, 800-foot of left turn lane that doesn't go to their access?
Whatever the improvements that we see need to be done, we're going to require the developers to do it.
Based on what?
Based on our traffic study, et cetera, that's done.
So the OSRD didn't see the need in improvements when James River expanded their campus and added two driveways on Farmer Branch? You didn't see a need to require improvements then?
I didn't understand.
So when James River Church expanded their campus recently and added two more driveways on Farmer Branch, you didn't, OSRD didn't see a need to require them to build turn lanes on Farmer Branch?
That was before my time, when they [inaudible].
So I know for a fact, the State Department of Transportation has a policy, and so does the City of Springfield, has a policy that they do not make developers build improvements that are either already warranted or are not required by the development. And this seems to be in the exact opposite of those. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Yeah, and I, and I can speak to that. I'm well familiar with what you're referring to. And again, we, we did not, and I agree with you, we are not asking the Marabella development to do anything that we do not feel is warranted. Now, the traffic study can say that X, Y, and Z is required from a capacity standpoint. I fully understand that. And we, we agree with those findings. What, what we didn't agree with the findings of the traffic study was the operational and safety component of it, which is what we felt like was necessary for Farmer Branch to be widened to three lanes.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we don't, and it may not be specific to Marabella, but I could see that things like this could drive developers out of the community into another community. And we want to make sure that we don't require things that are going to make developers want to leave. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else for traffic?
It's not traffic. Does Ozark Special Road District plow the roads? So would these Blue Stem and Farmer Branch, would they be plowed if we had snow?
I believe they are all three plowed.
Okay, I was just curious on that. Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll call you back if we have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioners, the floor is yours. Adam, you good? You got something? Okay. If we're good, we're looking for a, looking for a motion to move ahead here.
Can I make a comment or can I, does it have to be a question?
Nope, you can make a comment.
Chad, I think you and I should try to go, because I agree with what you said. So hopefully someone from Special Road District can come when, when this is in, on the next phase of this and we can ask that question to someone in Special Road District, because I agree, like, that's turning someone away. I know we had a lady here from Show Me Christian County, like, that's another thing. Like, we want to have these things in Christian County. So hopefully maybe the Special Road District could have someone here when it's in front of the mayor and the everyone else. And then we could ask that question, maybe get an answer. That was just my comment. I'm happy to make a motion because I think everyone else is good, though. So I move to approve PUD 25-0001. Someone have a question? Okay. I move to approve PUD-25-0001. Based on staff recommendation.
There you go. Adam, second. Need roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Moving right along. Last but not least, we are looking at the preliminary plat, 25-0001. And if the Commissioners will notice that number is different from your agenda, it's 01, not 03. It's been corrected everywhere else. We weren't as important as everybody else. That's okay. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. 25-0001 is the correct application number. I will read it again. This is the preliminary plat for Marabella, property owner at Marabella LLC. Property location, 229 acre, partially boarded by North Farmer Branch Road on the west and Blue Stem on the east. Ms. Megan, the floor is yours once again.
Yes, as we discussed, this is for the, obviously the same piece of property that we've had two previous applications for. So it does conform to the PUD's development regulations, the concept plan that is in your, was in your packet and was approved, the recommendation for approval was passed. There are 543 lots proposed with seven regional detention. I will correct that and say seven detention areas and two water quality areas. And then there are proposed 18 phases. As Mr. Roberts said, it's between seven to 10 years, probably is like the length of the development. And that's for the entire 229 acre parcel. So as also has been, a lot of this will have been discussed, I will say that. There is the 30-foot trail easement along the southern property line. There is existing water and sewer near the property lines as well. Any, there will probably be offsite extension of services and those are the responsibility of the developer to accomplish. And again, as we've discussed, the stormwater and traffic study reports were completed and reviewed by OSRD and the City of Ozark. And the final design will be part of the next phase when they do the public improvement plans for the Phase One or whichever phases they end up doing. And all requirements were met for the preliminary plat. There are no publication requirements. It is posted at the City Hall for people to know. And again, we put it on the website as well. And like the others, it will go before the Board of Aldermen on October 20th. And then second reading for the Board of Aldermen will be on November 3rd. And City and staff recommend approval of the plat.
Okay, thank you, Megan. Representative of the applicant in any shape, form, or fashion, I'd like to comment towards the preliminary plat application.
Again, Todd Chandler with Great River Engineering, just here for any questions. I think we've kind of gone over everything a couple of times now, so we'll be happy to address any questions you guys have.
Okay, thank you. We'll call you back. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else towards the applicant? I'll close that piece and open it up to the public for any comment or questions towards the preliminary plat. The floor is open. I'll go ahead and close the public portion, seeing no movement, and turn it over to the Commission for questions and comments. And I would like to start, who would I ask about phases? Who wants to answer me about phases?
I got it all right here.
What I, my question is this, when I was reading the information at home, maybe this is the wide scope, there was three phases. Now we're at 18. My question is, where do you interject the requirement for the road improvements? If I read it correctly, orig, I'm sorry, it was road. I'm sorry, I called the wrong one. I apologize. But if I read it correctly, it had to be completed at the end of Phase Two for occupancy permits to be issued.
Correct, yeah.
So does that, where does it fit in the 18?
Yeah. So really what we looked at with the traffic study is the number of dwelling units. And while 18 was a lot for the traffic study, we kind of condensed that down into those three phases. And that's really where the three is coming from. And really it came down to number of dwelling units.
Okay.
We took, I think it was roughly six of those phases and the number of dwelling units that would be developed. And once essentially the development hits that number of dwelling units in the development, they'll need to put in those improvements.
Okay, so there is a, I'm going to call them so many doors.
Correct, yep.
When you hit that number.
You need to put in.
You have to have the roads done.
Yep.
Now, does the app, does the requirement still verbalize to the point of no occupancy permits on certain ones of these? Won't be?
I think it's not certain ones, it's just necessarily number of doors.
Okay.
So, and that usually, that matches with like six of their 18 phases. So, but it doesn't necessarily identify which phase of their 18.
Okay, so let's say that, let's say you have to, I'm not sure how to ask. If at the end of the sixth phase, let's just say that's when it activates, whatever is been built or is being built in that first six phases, can they receive occupancy permits? You know what I'm saying? Does that requirement go into the next, like Phase Seven and on?
They, those first six can receive occupancy permits based upon the traffic study. And then once you start the next set, you'll need.
And then once you start the next set, you'll need to have those improvements in place before those next occupancy permits are issued.
Okay. I got you. Sorry, I took you all to get there.
No, no worries. That's what, as soon as you said three, I was like, he's talking about the traffic studies.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was going the wrong way. Okay. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Oh, yes.
I was just going to step in here. You are speaking about the exterior roads, the development, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the exterior, yeah.
So as a requirement for OSRD approval, those either have to be built or bonded before phase one begins. So that was a requirement in the letter. So I wanted to stipulate.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
So they either have to be, all the exterior improvements have to be built or bonded prior to the beginning of phase one.
Can you elaborate on built versus bonded?
Um, yeah. So they would have to, actually have to establish a bond, which is based on the city requirement for bonding for public roadway. I believe there's, a lot of times you have to put another 20% above any of the estimates that we get for that work. So usually it's always cheaper to build now than it is to build tomorrow. So that basically ties my developers' hands to build those roads day one.
Okay. That's news.
So that probably changes.
Go ahead.
I think that's a little bit different than what I heard earlier, unless I misunderstood. But so the traffic study says you don't have to build the exterior roadway improvements until you hit, you know, your, you know, six phases or whatever. But you're saying that OSRD is going to require those, everything to be built up front or escrow the entire amount?
That is our understanding. That is correct. And that was what was in the OSRD agreement as well.
Mr. Stell?
Unless we're, unless we didn't understand something in that agreement. But I, I was told that they were supposed to be done before phase one starts. But I'll let Derek.
Okay. Yeah, like clarification if we could please.
Yeah. So, so we, we agreed with the developer that the improvements could be phased appropriately as, as basically like what Dan was explaining. So for example, they're not planning on connecting to Blue Stem until like several phases down there. It could be five years before they connect to Blue Stem. We're obviously not going to want to see improvements to Blue Stem right up front if they're not going to be taking access to it. So the, the improvements can be phased in whatever manner the development is phased as well.
Okay. So that fits.
That would include the escrow too. You wouldn't have to escrow, say, Blue Stem until you were getting close to that phase.
Right, right. Exactly. Unless, unless of course they wanted to, like, let's say, for example, they got to a phase where it warranted improvements to Farmer Branch Road, but they didn't want to build improvements to Farmer Branch Road. Let's say, for example, because they plan on having a bunch of construction equipment on Farmer Branch Road, they didn't want to build a branded road and then tear it up with construction equipment. They could escrow the, escrow those improvements and then build them sometime after the fact.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Suzanne.
I have the same question, but on the, the drainage infrastructure. Your phases, you've got a detention area to the south, but it's connected to phase four and phase 12, 11, and 15. At least I think 15's in it. Does that mean that the drainage gets built first?
Uh, yes. It'll have to be built before any of those, I believe, before the city will permit any of those buildings to occur. The detention pond will have to be built in its final configuration before any of the home construction begins.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah. I just had another sidewalk question. But there, looks like there are two common area connections on the west side of the development that connect to Farmer Branch. From what I can tell in the plat, it looks like, it says common area dedicated. But is that a, is that one of the sidewalk connection from the neighborhood to the farmer's branch sidewalk on both of those? There's one in the northwest and one in the southwest.
Yeah, that's correct. That's around the, basically, one of those goes right through the commercial area.
Right.
And one of it goes between the, I think that's the 55 and over community where it has the common area with the dedicated, it says dedicated for public use. So that's the intent to connect to that farmer's branch sidewalk.
Okay. And so would, you know, I know you had it in one of the other ones, but there's quite a bit of paper up here. That is, is that for public use or are those private? Because they're connected to that public street?
Um, that'll be, that will be for public use.
Okay.
Yep. Good question.
Yep. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Question for the city. I think we've talked about this, but the inner roads to be built for the subdivision, will they be acquired by the city? And they'll be built by city standards? And then they'll become city streets or they're going to stay private?
I'll answer that the best I can, and then Mr. Parsons can correct me. But all the interior streets are public streets built to city standards and transferred to the city following completion. The perimeter are still OSRD, but all the new streets inside the subdivision will be city streets.
Okay. Thank you. You approved, Jeremy, right? Okay. 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 Anyone else? Lot of good discussion. I love it.
I just have a quick comment. I just want to tell, Michael, thank you. I know I wasn't here when you were here earlier, but I read through all the stuff. We appreciate, I appreciate you coming in and kind of going over that. Todd, Dan, I appreciate all, like, the questions and everyone. So that really, like, any concerns that we had, I really appreciate you guys answering. And like, I know we had a ton of stuff before, but like, it really helped kind of coming in. So I appreciate that. And thank you to Megan for her hard work getting this stuff together.
Okay. Next step, anyone willing to make a motion? Chad, go for it.
I move to recommend approval of preliminary plat 25-0001 as presented in the report and the staff's findings.
I'll second. Suzanne got second. She made it under the wire. Go ahead and do a roll call. Ava, please.
Aye.
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 All right.
Done. Very good. Well, that concludes all the business that we have this evening. Thank you for all in, for your attendance. Open it up. We have just the final thoughts here by the commission. Anyone have anything they would like to say? Hadley?
You know, I always have something. Hey, this is Friday night to the community, a homecoming game. We're playing Waynesville. So please come out. We have an awesome new scoreboard and like the school district's been doing a lot of really good things. So like our tennis courts, if you check out the baseball field, it's going to come and it's going to be great. Also Saturday, we have a band competition at Ozark Schools, the show that they've been doing. I listen to it every first hour, like, I hear that, but I mean, it's going to be amazing. So please continue to come out and support Ozark Schools. We're right on Fridays. That's all I got.
I second that statement. Caleb?
Nothing.
Suzanne? Pete?
I just want to thank Megan and the city for, sorry, for all the work that they did in the seminar and the meeting that we went to this last week. There were a lot of good things in there. And actually, there were some things that I think that Ozark's on top of. I think that there are three or four things that were used as demonstration of good planning that we've already done. We've got some walkability, the trails, and we've got, which was one of the topics that they had. As a matter of fact, the keynote speaker spoke to that. Another one was the Smolink Cave. And another one was accessibility to our parks for wheelchairs, so everybody can participate. We've got all three of those things and I'm proud of Ozark. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Lacy? Trevor?
I'll second what Pete said.
Adam? Chad? Administrative comments. Megan?
I would just say next month should also be a pretty busy one as well. So maybe not as large of a packet as this one, but going to have a number of, of applications.